Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the September 1st, 2022 Board Meeting of the School District of Haverford Township. If we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Arthur, would you call the roll, please?
Dr. Crispin?
Here.
Dr. King?
Here.
Dr. Larson?
Here.
Dr. McKay?
Here.
Mr. Schwartz? Ms. Snodgrass?
Here.
Ms. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Feinberg?
Here.
Ms. Wedeman?
Ms. Wedeman and Mr. Schwartz are both out of town on vacation. Before we move into the agenda, I'd just like to welcome everybody for the new school year and have a few, a few numbers to, to roll out. It's my understanding that our student census this year is 6,769, which is the highest it's ever been. I can remember not too long ago when we broke 6,000, so it's, people continue to choose the school district. We have 132 new employees this year. So we, we thank them for stepping up and we certainly thank the administration for doing all the work that's involved in recruiting and onboarding 132 new employees. On the cyber charter side, last year we had 33 students in cyber charter schools. This year we're down to 19, so that'll save some tax dollars. Certainly want to thank the taxpayers of Haverford Township who foot the bill for all of this. If, if you are a new kindergarten family, I just want to tell you, everything's going to be alright. And if you're a, a new senior, go for it, make the most out of it. We'll look forward to shaking your hands in June. So, thanks to everybody for, for all the work and we'll look forward to a great new school year. I'll accept a motion to approve the official minutes from the August 18th, 2022 Regular Public Board Meeting.
Larson moved.
Vitale second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. No report from students this meeting, but will, will we see them next, next meeting?
Probably the meeting after. Yeah, by the next meeting they'll just be in school for about two weeks. So I think it's the first meeting in October.
Okay, we'll look forward to that. Next up Superintendent's comments, Dr. Rushee.
Thanks, Mr. Feinberg. We welcomed new teachers last week. There are almost 50 in that group that were here for days of in-service. And this week, we welcomed all staff back. There's such a feeling of positivity across the district. I think everyone is, is really appreciative of being in an environment that's more familiar to them and comfortable to them than, than has been the last few years. As Mr. Feinberg mentioned, there, you know, over 130 new staff members across the district. So that involved quite a bit of interviewing and processing of applications and paperwork through our HR office and also at the schools with the building administrators leading the way with, with a lot of that. I know I've said it before, but I feel like I can't say it enough to thank all of the, the employees in, in the many offices who have us situated quite well to welcome kids and start the school year next, next Tuesday. Our maintenance and custodial, the business office, curriculum office, pupil services, and transportation. And just a public service announcement, you know, we ask families to give us at least the first two weeks to let things sort of settle in to the schedules with, with transportation and to see how things, how things work out. And just to alert people that our, many buses will be out traveling those roads as of, as of Tuesday morning. So, thank you.
Next, the agenda item is a public comment for items on the agenda. No one has signed up to speak in that section and there will be an additional public comment section later in the agenda. Next item is Board Committee Report. Dr. Crispin?
Yes, thank you. So the Craig County Committee met last Thursday. Our first presentation was from Nicole Battistelli about the cyclical monitoring, monitoring for continuous improvement, CMCI. Hopefully I got that right. It's required by Pennsylvania Department of Education every six years, reviewing three years of data. It was very clear from the presentation, this is a very rigorous process and it sounds like a very time-consuming process on behalf of staff in the district. It includes a self-assessment, surveys and interviews, onsite visits and onsite file reviews. It sounded like our district had a, had a very successful audit. I believe the direct quote was "a very healthy audit." And we received commendations for some of our inclusion initiatives, including best buddies, Special Olympics and Unified Sports. So that was really great to hear. Areas for improvement, ESY documentation, barriers to special education students participating in general education classrooms and participation of special education students in the PSSAs. So there were some, there was some discussion in the presentation about next steps. That involves including a development of a corrective action plan and that will be submitted to PDE addressing the plans for these three different areas of improvement. We also had a presentation about the Special Education ELA Audit and Update by Natalia Adelisi. It was, they have completed their internal audit and then they're, they're discussing family feedback and the external audit. From the internal audit strengths, it sounded like there were many strong resources for reading fluency and many resources for reading comprehension. Some areas for improvement, additional resources for students who are one to three years behind grade level. Some more materials and resources for phonics instruction and for writing instruction. It sounded like the family feedback strengths were very strong communication with and from the special education teachers. And then some identified areas for improvement. Working on explaining how students learn to read and why they struggle with reading and then engaging children in literacy instruction. From all of this, there's not an ask for tonight's meeting, but it sounds like we'll be hearing in the future about some additional materials and resources that we might need to vote on. And always I remind everybody on the board and in the public, if you weren't at the meeting, it's on YouTube, it's recorded, so anyone's welcome to, to go back and watch those great presentations. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next item is the Bill List. I'll accept a motion to approve dispersments from the following funds as listed.
Crispin move.
King second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept a motion to accept the recommendation of the project architect KCBA and Associates, Inc. and owner's representative CB Development Services, Inc. and authorize the change orders totaling $1,495 as listed.
McKay moved.
Crispin second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Human Resources. I'll accept a motion to accept the following resignations as listed.
King moved. Larson second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept a motion to approve the following non-acceptance of appointment.
Crispin move. Larson second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept a motion to approve the following appointments as listed below. Contingent upon receipt of all necessary clearances, including Act 168 of 2014.
Larson moved. McKay second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept a motion to approve the leave request as listed.
King moved. Crispin second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept, I'll accept a motion for the Board of Directors to approve the educational services agreements for students in the district with special needs. The agreements cover reimbursement for educational services as listed.
Crispin move.
Larson moved.
Crispin second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept a motion to approve the following educational contract for a student attending out-of-district ESY placement for the summer of 2022.
Vitale moved. Snodgrass second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Can we get a little bit of explanation for the public why this is for summer 2022? And it's now the end of summer 2022. We're proving it now.
They just sent us the contract last week, but the child went to ESY. They just did it without having a signed contract.
The child received services.
Yes.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept a motion to approve the following educational service contracts for services provided to students and/or staff with the district.
Vitale move. Crispin second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept a motion to approve the following educational contract for a student attending out-of-district placement for the 2022-23 school year.
Crispin move. Snodgrass second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept a motion to approve the following student educational excursions as listed below.
McKay moved.
Vitale second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? This looks great. It's, it's good to see Agenda Items talking about cross-country teams and boys volleyball teams, so good to see. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept a motion to accept the first reading of Policy 901 Communications and 901 AR Administrative Regulations.
Snodgrass moved. Larson second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
I'll just give a really quick update of this. So, this is part of our ongoing policy audit that we started at the beginning of this calendar year, where we're going through the policies to update them. Most of them haven't been reviewed in more than a decade, so this is part of that. Policy 901 is an important one. It's about communications with the district and the older policy was kind of all over the place. Just as a reminder, the Policy Committee talked about this at at least one of the Policy Committee meetings. So, for a really in-depth discussion of, you know, the differences between 901 as it is, as you can see on Board Docs, and 901 as we're presenting to the Board today, that is a really good discussion. But even just as a high-level overview, the 901 was sort of before kind of threading this needle of being very specific, but also very broad in a way that didn't make a whole lot of sense to us. And so, the Policy Committee reviewed this and really the, the purpose now of the Section 901 is for the, the administration to create a school community communications plan. And that, basically the policy sort of just really gives way to, for the, for the district to do that. And same thing with the administrative regulation. The district would appoint a chief communications representative to oversee the creation of the plan and the implementation of the plan. So, you know, this makes a lot more sense than the Board sort of delineating a couple things that need to be done, but then, you know, sort of just not having direction for a lot of other communication matters. So, the Policy Committee thought this was a good update to this policy, which we think is obviously of a lot of importance to the public and to all of our, to all of the, the people in our schools. If anyone has any questions on the proposed language, I'm happy to discuss or if anyone else, you know, from the Policy Committee to discuss as well.
Any other comments from the Board? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept a motion to accept the first reading of Policy 914, Relations with Intermediate Unit.
Crispin move.
Vitale second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
I'll give another recap. This is another one that is an existing policy that the Committee reviewed and made quite a few changes to, really to update it and try and reflect the, the practice of how the district is relating to the IU. This would have the, the Board review, let me see here. Take an annual review of the, the proposed IU budget, which was in there. It was something that we discussed at the Committee about how that looks. And, and really it's something that we thought was really important. The IU offers a lot to our district. And so having, having that continue to be part of the policy so that everyone on the Board, everyone in the district and the community can see what we're getting from our contribution towards the IU, what they're giving, giving back to our students. Other than that, the changes that you see are really again just to reflect maybe some more current practices with, you know, how we communicate with the IU. And I don't think there was an AR for this one. So it's just really the policy.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept a motion to accept the first reading of Policy 916, Volunteers, and 916 AR Administrative Regulations.
King moved. Snodgrass second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Me again. You're really shepherding us through this, Larry, so I appreciate it. I know this is the most exciting part of the meeting for everyone. This, this is another policy that I think is really important. Let me see, I don't know when it was last reviewed. It's not, not too long ago, not as long as some of the other ones, but it was an important one that we, that we wanted to reflect again, the goals of the district and to really make sure that people reading the policy understand the policy. And that's a lot of what the Policy Committee is doing with this audit. To make sure we're looking at it as, if you're a parent or a community member and, and you want to volunteer, you know, how do you do that? You, you look at the policy and you want to make sure that it makes sense. So, you know, a lot of these I think were, were more minor revisions to this policy, but I think they're important ones because we really classify, you know, specific types of volunteers. And then that will help you when you're looking at, you know, what kind of volunteer am I? You know, do I need, you know, this clearance? Do I need that? You know, what, what kind of job is this? You know, or volunteer position is this? So I just think it gives a little bit more clarity to, to really, you know, real life about, you know, when you're going to, to volunteer. And that's, that's reflected in the ARs as well. So the ARs had very minimal revisions to them and it was really, you know, the policy making it more clear.
Antoinette, I just had a quick question. I like the, the separation between position volunteer and guest volunteer. I was just curious and it was very clear which fell in, and I was thinking specifically of Linwood for parents who run after-school clubs, but they're not, not a coach. I'm like, is that an activity advisor with, that's more, does it even fall in this? Because it's something we've tackled in the past. I was just specifically thinking about them. You know, it's after-school hours.
I don't think that's an activity volunteer. Activity, the first one being.
The position volunteer, right? So, you know.
It would go under there.
Right. So I think you can sort of think of this in two buckets and if you think maybe we can, if you, if you think we could add another example to that, that would make it more clear. But I think the buckets are like this position volunteer, which is sort of like ongoing, something that would have like recurring contact with the students. Whereas like a guest volunteer, you know, the example that we use in the policy is like a career day. Right? And so you're a parent coming in for career day or maybe it's, you know, a very specific event, something like that.
I thought it fell more with, based on your great definitions, the position volunteer. I just started thinking, I wonder even if they need to be, so they would need to be a position volunteer. That was more my confusion. Do they even count? Because it's after school and it's not an official district activity like a coach who is running the soccer team or field hockey team.
I think it does because we're having it in our school buildings with students. It's sort of like an activity advisor, you know, area. So I would think that that would, would fall in there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
How is this policy communicated to families, parents, adults who do want to volunteer? I mean, maybe it's not this policy because we haven't approved it yet, but in the past, how has the volunteer policy been communicated?
Through, through the building principles.
Okay.
And PTOs, like they're, yeah, since they're the ones grabbing most of the volunteers, they're like parties and shepherd, like they're the ones always pumping out, handing your clearances and keeping track of who can go into the building to help out with parties.
We appreciate all the work the PTOs do for sure.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Before we vote, I would just like to acknowledge the good work of the entire Policy Committee, the help of our solicitor and Antoinette. I was going to thank you, but I think you enjoy this.
Do enjoy this. Happy to have more people show up to our policy committees and, you know.
Thank you because it's very necessary work and it's great that you're shepherding it through for us. Thanks again. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item, I'll accept a motion to approve the resolution adopting the PSBA Principles for Governance and Leadership.
Snodgrass moved.
Vitale second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Can we say re-adopting? Is that appropriate? Because we already adopted these, correct? But we're re-adopting them as a newly, a new board or new board with a new constitution? Is that right? I don't know if that matters. No. I'm just curious because we did.
I think legally it doesn't matter.
Okay. I'm just curious. But it's an important point that we have reviewed these before in the past. We thought they were important to acknowledge as a board. You know, the PSBA quite clearly lays out, you know, being committed to the highest ideals of excellence, of student achievement, school governance. And this is, I think, a really good way for us as a board to acknowledge, you know, how we want to hold ourselves.
And I'll just add that once we approve this, we'll have our Board members sign it and find the wall for it maybe over there. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next Agenda Item is Public Comment for Items Not on the Agenda. I'd just like to say that if folks are interested in public comment, the instructions for how to sign up, all that good stuff is on the website. And as far as this evening goes, when I call your name, please come to the podium, state that you're a township resident and state your name. You'll have three minutes to speak and when you get to the end of three minutes, we'll ask you to finish up. First speaker is Dan Crowe.
Hi, my name is Dan Crowe. I'm a Haverford Township resident. And I've got a ninth grader starting at the high school next week and a fourth grader who will be starting at Cooper Town or returning to Cooper Town. I'd like to thank the Board for their support of Basis and specifically for providing training to district staff and leadership via the recently approved contract with Dignity Consulting. It's an important step towards building a more inclusive school system, which will help everyone, especially our more marginalized students, to feel like they're a part of the community and thereby help them succeed. Our world's increasingly diverse and as students graduate, they need the skills to effectively communicate, listen to and work with all sorts of people. Those skills really begin with inclusivity. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Elena Wisely.
Good evening. My name is Elena Wisely. I am a resident of the township. Last year, I spent many months begging for you to stop a lot of what you're doing. But this year I spent many months trying to understand why you are doing it. I no longer believe that you have nefarious intent. I believe that you have good intentions. However, the road to hell is paved with good intentions. And we have common goals. Although our opinion differs on how we may reach that goal, you can easily weigh the outcome of the completion of your good intentions by measuring data that's available to you. Or I could do a right-to-know and waste taxpayer dollars and collect the data that you already have access to and show it to you. The irony is not lost on the fact that what you have intended to do resulted in exactly the opposite. Our children's education is suffering. Drug use is up, grades are down. Sex and violence is up, morale is down. You could blame the pandemic, however, there's a control to this experiment our children are in. Schools that are not using CRT, BLM, gender studies, or as we call it, Basis and SEL are not seeing these same deficits. I understand that your belief system is your identity and asking you to abandon your beliefs would be catastrophic, but I'm not asking you to abandon your beliefs. Rather be willing to work together to achieve our common goals. When we unify our principles under the desired outcomes, rather than fighting over our differing trajectories, we can accomplish what we all believe is best for our children. There's an old fable, you might have heard it, about two peasants named Ivan and Boris. Both are poor, however Boris has a goat and Ivan does not. One day Ivan came across a genie who was willing to grant him one wish. Ivan wished for Boris's goat to die. By trying to accomplish equity for equal outcomes versus equality, which is equal opportunity, and improving or removing things such as sports on field day, because not everyone is athletic, actually harms many kids. Removing the use of punishment and replacing it with restorative practice creates more bad behavior by removing accountability. Removing levels creates an unfairness to the children who work hard and are deserving of the greater results they produced for themselves. Instead, continue field day as normal, but add non-athletic activities, allowing kids to decide what they want to participate in. Childhood competition and athletic activity are more than games. They are life lessons that teach problem-solving, listening skills, leadership, teamwork, empathy, creative thinking, critical thinking, self-esteem and compassion. Rather than removing levels, create a tutor-mentor program that upperclassmen can use as community service and add to their college applications. Because some kids choose not to apply themselves for greatness should not result in punishing those who do not. Our children should also have bathroom stalls and properly working bathrooms despite bad behavior that results in them being destroyed. In life, we make our own success without crippling the success of others. Please don't kill our children's goats.
Our next speaker is Mary Ann Butera. Mary Ann Butera. Okay, our last speaker is Helene Conroy Smith.
Good evening. Sorry I was a little late. I was enjoying my child. I just want to talk about Sunshine Law. And under Title 65, Section 2, Accountability, and Chapter 7, Open Meetings, 705, The Recording of Votes. I just want to talk about all meetings in agencies. The vote of each member who actually votes on any resolution, rule, order, regulation, ordinance, or the setting of official policy must be cast and publicly voted on. And I'm seeing that done, which I appreciate. But I am concerned about 706, The Minutes of Meetings, Public Records, and Recording of Meetings. Written meetings, minutes, shall be kept of all open meetings of the agencies, which Haverford School District's the agencies. And the minutes need to include specific information, date, time, place, the names of members present, the substance of all official actions and records, and individual members of a roll-call vote. And then lastly, the names of all citizens who appeared officially and the subject of their testimony. So I'm not necessarily seeing that in the meetings that are occurring in your committee, which they're still open meetings. So when we have an open meeting and you're having committee meetings, there is some deliberation occurring. And deliberation under the law says the discussion of agency business held for making the purpose of making a decision. Although you're not making your final decision, you are making decisions on what to bring to the board meeting the next time. And a meeting is any pre-arranged gathering of an agency which is attended or participated in by a quorum of the members of an agency, held for the purpose of deliberating agency business or taking official action. So I'm just asking, where are the minutes of the committee meetings? Since now the committee meetings have been occurring since August of 2021. The other thing I'd like to address is 710, Public Participation Rule. So everyone's able, under the political subdivision or the authority created by the political subdivision, shall provide a reasonable opportunity at each advertised regular meeting and advertised special meeting for residents of the political subdivision or authority to be able to have discussion. My concern is that sometimes here at this meeting, there's things that occur that people aren't able to then come up and have discussion or make comments. So we've kind of limited who can come and speak. And the equity would occur is if, like before, people could just come up, sign a book, sign their name, put their address, and then speak. That would be equitable. Also, the Office of Open Records, when I spoke with them, they said that they recommend that you answer some of the questions to the public. Even though you are not required to do so, it's good practice. And aren't we moving towards good practice and transparency in the Haverford School District? It's part of our mission statement. And also, it helps your constituents, who are taxpayers of this political subdivision, and it answers some of their questions. So please start answering our questions. Thank you.
Our next agenda item is Board Reports. So why don't we start at that end of the table? Kim?
I had the great opportunity on Tuesday to be part of the opening day. And I just want to say thank you to all the staff and the students who came out to make the morning really possible with such a sense of celebration. And although Dr. Ruchi and Bridgette did a great job, I must say the star of the morning was Mike Mullen with his guitar and singing. And your joyous energy was palpable, I think, in the room. And I really appreciated some of the rewording that you made. One of the songs, the rewording was "I'll Be the Safe Place That Will Harbor You", and that just really struck me. I think it's important to be clear that the dignity and belonging training, that was one of the things that was part of that morning, was asked for by administrators and teachers who had previously been to a workshop by the facilitators. And really was a message of belonging is the goal and dignity is the action. And I just think it was a really great way of starting the year to set that tone. And I just want to say in general, diversity, equity, and inclusion are part of our mission statement that we read. And it's not something you can just check a box on. It's something that agencies and schools with this in their mission must be deliberate and intentional. And I just want to say thank you again to the administration for prioritizing dignity and belonging with this training. And it is important that as we go into the future, that diversity, equity, and inclusion continue to be prioritized with future trainings and workshops.
Thanks, Kim. Krista?
Yeah, just wanted to wish everyone a wonderful school year. We are thrilled to have our daughter joining the Chestnut Wall community. She's going to first grade. We had the opportunity to visit the school yesterday. She got to, you know, tour the classrooms. We brought our toddler with us as well. I think he's ready for kindergarten. So just thank you to the PETO, thank you to Mr. Dentelsbeck and to Chestnut Wall for all the work they put into, and the teachers as well. The classrooms look amazing, and we're just very excited for Tuesday to come. So we're excited for this school year, and we wish you all a wonderful year as well.
Thanks. Danielle?
I also had the opportunity today to go to Linwood for their sneak peek. And it was very exciting to see all the kids, all the teachers. I mean, the building's still new and gorgeous, so it's just as good as I remember it back in June. But it was nice to see all the classrooms and the happy faces. And I think we're excited for the next school year. That's it.
Thanks. Antoinette?
Thanks. Yeah, I just want to say to everyone, enjoy the last weekend of summer. Have, you know, some free time, not thinking about school. And then come Tuesday, I have kids who are very excited to join their new school communities. So I know everyone else does too. And, you know, couldn't happen without the great staff and administration that just works all summer long to prepare for the first day and beyond. So just a heartfelt thank you to everyone. Thanks to all of our bus drivers, learning the routes, and, you know, being prepared for transporting a lot of kids. You know, it's really an honor to be part of this community. And, you know, we look forward to another great year.
Thanks, Antoinette. Dr. King?
So I will continue with the sentiment related to returning to school. I also have a fourth grader coming back to Chestnut Wall. He's pretty excited about that. He's checked his school supply list several times. He was thrilled when he got his teacher assignment. And he wants to make sure that he's all prepared and ready to go. I'm hopeful that our teachers have had a restful summer and excited to return back to have another amazing year. Thank you.
Dr. Crispin?
I'm going to break the trend and give you an update from the Delaware County Community College. But before I do that, I will say, yeah, my incoming first grader to Linwood, very excited, very excited. So it's going to be a good year, and hopefully with a lot of normalcy. That's, I think, what everyone is hoping for and wishing for and looking forward to. So the Delaware County Community College, two updates. One of them is for the community, one of them is for my colleagues on the Board. For members of the community, there is a trustee vacancy. A member of the Board of Trustees of Delaware County Community College, their term is up and they are not running, or not seeking to be, to continue with their term. So the Delaware County Community College is seeking a candidate for this vacancy on the Board of Trustees. There's a long list, and maybe this is something we could put on the website or something. It's a long list. I don't know that reading it is a great choice. But basically, they're looking for people that are enthusiastic about community colleges, that are willing to commit time to attend all of the various meetings and special events, who can work well with a group and who would be an ambassador for the college within their community. You can be a member of any of the sponsoring school districts, which includes ours. Current school board members, officers, solicitors are not eligible to apply, but members of the community can. So if we can post this, there's an email address and a phone number for anybody who wants more information. I do believe a resident of Haverford Township recently, yeah, was recently chosen for a position. So it would be kind of exciting if we had another one. But if anybody is interested, and I'll put this out there for everyone. The other update I had, I do believe that everybody, all the members of the Board should have received an email from the community college. And if not, I can figure out a way to get that to you. It's just a, let me find it real quick. It's a strategic planning survey. Since we are a sponsoring district, they're interested in hearing from Board members from sponsoring districts just about, you know, your thoughts about their mission and about their upcoming planning. So if you can fill that out, I know that they would greatly appreciate your feedback. So those are my two updates for you. Did you all receive that by chance? Did anyone else receive that?
Sounds familiar.
Okay, so I'll get it to Dr. Ruchi, and then she can send it out to all of you. So, great, thanks.
Great. Thanks, everybody. The Board met in executive session prior to the meeting with counsel to discuss construction-related litigation. Our next regular public board meeting is scheduled to be held on September 15th, 2022, at 7:30 PM in the boardroom of the Oakmont Administration Building. And with that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Snodgrass moved.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.